... which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's October 3rd, 2011, time is seven, we begin the regular meeting, we're now in council's board order, this time the question on cell phones, payers, any other electronic devices, be silent please. I guess what's interfering with PA is that. Throw call, will you please, Jim?
Jamie?
Here.
There.
Yes.
Here.
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 Okay. New business, three hours.
He's going to be up.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. He proved that's the longest level, September 6th, 1967. I'm going to be approved.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And how do you do, three hours?
Callings on Monday?
Yes, yes.
Always been on, it's always been on, how many?
I think it's five today.
I would say, you know, motion, yes, I would move make the Howland hours five to eight on Howland, which is the Monday meeting first. Second, discussion, remember a couple of questions?
Dale?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Brian Robbins.
Well, I last meeting, I finished off the, I guess, the closure of the local historic district by adding a possible incentive for downtown, which was always, had been as mentioned, kind of pushed for the local historic district, something that I wanted to consider. I was one, I did email this, but tardy to Janet, did anybody, did everybody get one of these? I think, okay. Essentially where it is, is an economic development target area, since we are a local historic district, it enables us to establish this area, and what it does essentially is any sort of investment in buildings downtown, which raises the property taxes on that building, the difference between starting the property tax and the finished property tax, created after the investment, that tax is, is abated a certain percentage. I know Columbus has used this to do great, I believe, do great success in downtown Columbus, and there's a six-year abatement. Talking with Tim afterwards, he did mention that there was one step ahead of you and establish the business, or the area as an economic restructuring area as well, but that's fairly easy to do. Greensburg has used the economic development target area previously on a multifamily housing project on, through Pinnacle Properties and the 908 Fleetwood Drive, and I found that, but I didn't recollect where that is, but it has been in Greensburg's arsenal before. And this is, this is just one of the incentives that were, you know, possibly could help our downtown look good for developers. We do currently have a project in the old YPC that's going to be, that's moving along as far as senior housing, this would benefit them, and be enticing, more enticing for them for greater investment. We also are looking at the old Decatur Apartments building, which currently is still in need of repair. We, I met with just another group a couple of weeks ago, who's interested in it for a tax credit project, but in order, this is not continued, but I think in order to get more looks from larger developers, we as a small rural community, we every sort of incentive we can, is something that not only developers from outside, but also current owners who are thinking about investing in their, their upper floors, or their exterior, anything that would raise their property taxes, this would help them out. So, of course, I can't suggest anything like that, I can, if people have more questions or want more information, there's more documentation I can provide, you know, be to Tim or to you guys, if you guys want to look into it further. If there's another incentive, be it, you know, a TIF has been talked about, but, you know, we can look into that too. But this was something that because we did move forward with the local historic district, this was one of our motivations in establishing that, is this, being able to get this economic incentive as well for downtown, so, I guess, to, I'm still here to encourage that, and would be willing to help in any way if we want to pursue that. The QAP forms for, for housing tax credit projects is due on November 1st, and again, we do have some folks looking at probably downtown. It's one of those incentives that I think would be enticing to.
How would that work, Brian, if you had housing above and business down below?
It's on the, it's on the property, actually, it's on the property.
If they, for a certain amount of time, or?
It's up to you guys, it can be up, up to 10, and, you know, and depending on how long you do, the, the first year would be 95 percent, the next year would be, you know, 80, maybe, or 90 percent, 85, depending on how long you want, trying to take how long, six years.
The state usually goes anywhere from five, 10 years.
Yeah, you can do anywhere from a year to 10 years, you know, the state's changed.
But then, this thing like this, would it be a set amount, or would it be up to the abatement committee?
It'd be up to the committee, I guess, if the investment was, if the, if the, if that should be.
Be that different to the final grade?
Yes, usually the way the tax payment makes that pass, the decision my wife has to, it's hard to say.
EDTAs is a little, is a little different, it actually allows you to abate projects that otherwise you wouldn't be able to make in a normal ERA. They're quite, quite, talk to Brian about, is there, the term that I usually do, is concentric, it's the ERA, the EDA has to be within ERA, so you, when you set up, when you set up EDA, you want to make sure that there's ERA that, that at least covers that same amount of area, which I think, Brian, it's not a tremendously difficult process, and if you're going to do the EDA, it would make sense to do them at that point. You establish your ERA first, but you can do them in the same meeting if I remember correctly, your notice provisions and everything.
That we want that ERA established.
Correct, and, and, again, there are different, there are different types of eligible abating projects, or EDA, I don't recall, it may not be 10 years for the EDA, they're not impressive, Brian, I can't recall.
Yeah, they can, they can go up to 10 years, so what, what the things could be, retail could be abated under, retail properties could be abated under EDA, not under ERA.
Tiny?
Yeah, residential, and that sort of thing, so it, it relaxes those rules, but in a normal ERA. Essentially what we're trying to do is get the same incentive, is that a lot of the outward properties, you know, or building sites can provide to, people were bringing those down, down to our downtown, providing some of those same benefits to, to develop in the downtown. Like, and I, I, you know, what I said, I have those cities that advertise in the lives EDA already, so there's about 24 of them already, and this was done back when we first started the local historic district, so I'm sure there's more since then, so about four years ago, but.
But if I'm understanding, Jamie correct, we would need, we, the ERA set that up and have those guidelines, or do you do anything with EDA?
No, I mean, the, the ERAs.
Look into it and decide what kind of boundaries we want.
That's it, right, Gary, it's your, it's your boundary, the economic revitalization area, you want to set up your boundaries, then, and you're going to be limited as to within your historic district, what qualifies your constitutes historic district, and that's for your, for your EDA, economic development target area. But, but you're right, you'd start off with the ERA and identify that exactly where it's at. Are you looking at any other incentives other than tax abatements, or what else would be?
Well, we, I mean, we have, currently, we have the mentioned side grant, we have the loan interest loan program, which is just, on the side note, is expanding, we're doing a small business loan interest loan program, and small business plan contest for both, for adults. So that's, that's going to be a great incentive, that's not just limited to the downtown, though, it's limited to actually county, obviously we'll try to concentrate downtown, but, you know, anybody in the county that has something like that, that's going to be launched here soon. The other is the Almond Taylor Foundation has the grants for, for specifically downtown, so we, we have some decent, decent incentives. The local historic district can be on the National Register of Historic Downtown also qualifies it for historic rehabilitation tax credits, which is what some of these do, developers from outside, they, they take advantage of those, a great deal, so. And, again, if you can mix those with senior housing credits, or low income housing credits, or some of the others, you can usually get a pretty good project, and that's what we're trying to, trying to get as many benefits to look into downtown Greensburg as possible.
What kind of interest do you have right now?
I took, on Sippin Main Street property, I've taken four development groups through there, one out of Chicago, another out of Lexington, and two from Indianapolis, and we had, I just got contacted by another person out of Cincinnati, so, there are people that are, are looking at that historic renovations right now. Well, I went to Indiana Housing Community Development Authority seminar, and they had a number of equity firms on a panel, and a gentleman in the audience asked, what was their appetite for historic tax credits, and it's across the board, they all said, we want, we want them bad, and so, our past doings and your past doings, as far as with downtown setting up within historic district, is, is, will and has benefited us so far, so, we want to continue to set this up as, as much as possible. So, again, nothing can obviously be bashed here, but I guess I was just wondering if, you know, if you'd like me to, to look into more, get some, I can get, you know, verged from, from some of the other cities, how they were doing, or, if you wish to proceed at all, I guess.
If Columbus has one, do they have, you said guidelines or whatever, whatever they go by, can you put that in back and forth for next, next month's meeting?
Sure.
I can tell you, pretty much alternate code is, you know, what I set out, and I, I just, I tell you who probably can give you good ideas to, to the worthiness of, of what, is, is somebody like, I'm sure Humble has literature, they have read it, about these things, about what the benefits are, you know.
I got, I first found out through Baker and Daniels, I know, developments.
Yeah, I mean, they have all these workshops that talk to you about what's out there, so, you know, just ask them for.
And, and we have, we have from 1995, 96, the residential, which are already passed in Greensburg, doing its, you know, signing codes and all the, all the, so I can make copies of that and put it in there as well. But, I guess, I was just wondering if you guys want me to proceed, was that?
I think the feel of it was good, I mean, anything that entices business.
And this, this will be, it's more on an investment line, it's not if you open a business, you're going to pay, but the, the investment you put into the buildings, be it, you know, rehabilitation, or for, you know, any sort of improvements you do to the business, or a building, that, that raises the appraisal value of that, of that feature.
And I guess, the ERA, what businesses and so forth, we kind of need to know, if there's a number of them that would be available, or what that would determine maybe, maybe there aren't enough to, to receive with this, am I?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think generally the ERAs are established so that if, you know, the idea is to attract business, and they land with, they bring their business to that ERA, then they become eligible to have, you know, a gradual abatement of their taxes, and, I used to, and again, I don't claim to be an expert, but I've always said that EDA is just an opportu, it's, it's a very limited opportunity, I mean, it's, it's what it, you know, like Brian said, you don't have a district valued eligible to have, so.
So we have first step, now we need to see what we, what's involved next.
All right, so I'll put together that package, which you guys have here from the 1995, and then copy what Columbus has, and I might give a couple other cities, and with your blessing, we'll continue forward, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you. Well, I think we will send some names, and, uh, three names, I think you mentioned one, and I don't know, just happy to go to, and other three, I would throw out David Lee, who's, what, some of the rest of the council, if you have other names.
Who, yeah, the two names.
Tony Colson, I think, was one of them, and Cliff Knopf, over three, I don't recall getting any other, I don't have a number.
Are you not?
I can, that's okay.
Shame please.
Game please, yes.
Good noise.
Yeah, we, yeah, we do need.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Erb?
Yes.
Yes.
I move we pass, right, in 2011, yeah.
Second. Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Erb?
Yeah.
Yes.
Next time is, motion 2011, that's 12, to 2011 budget.
I have motion to pass resolution 2011, national, second.
Discussion.
Dale?
Yes.
Erb?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Erb?
Motion 2011, that's twelve, tax abatement for GCOM.
Most opinion of the tax abatement committee?
Well, as you look at your copy, and you turned all the back pages, we did add, down to this, if you redo the current economic times in Greensburg, we will issue this abate as long as employee numbers are retained, in parenthesis 947, for a vote, in the Greensburg plant, I'm sure, in Greensburg plant.
Have worried, have worried about that?
No, no.
And, you know, that's considering the Congress states state, or gains, has to do this, that, if it does like it did 2008, and so we have, we have considered that.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe circumstances are not very low, or is that, that, our concerns are, keep, not spending someplace else, and, here, it's pants and grounds.
So those, that's considered, right, you'll be, yes. That's why this is on this, so we'll be copying this, which is.
So basically, if the number drops below that, would it not even come back to reasonable? Or just be fine?
Honestly, you do review by the committee.
Yeah, we'd review by the committee.
For what you've asked, they would consider that, and, honestly, if the Congress states where it's at, proves, and their quality is down, chances are, they may not get this big information. Because I think that's a good idea, if the Congress states, ah, they do that on the board, they do taxes.
If you have an incentive, a tax maker has an incentive, by bringing employees in, but we're just asking, basically, is it, is it to keep the work on employees, if you got to?
I move we go ahead and pass that resolution 2011, that's twelve, and tax abatement for GCOM, as approved by the abatement committee, and with the language added by the committee.
Second. Any discussion?
Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Ellen? Yes.
Next time, it's resolution 2011, that's thirteen, transfer foundation funds, trade credit, resolution, for lots of, quite a few, it's not clean, it looks upset.
Move we pass resolution 2011, that's thirteen, second. I said, one question, what is Brown deal three?
That's, that's true, all the older, you can say yourself, taking those tanks out. Taking those tanks out, right, we got insurance, and let me see if that's where.
Oh, the old cities?
Yeah, the old cities, they have those teams.
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Erb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
The resolution for this one?
I don't have that, I'll do that. Yeah, I got that, but I need to have a resolution on the GCOM, and I didn't have that.
You, you have all things?
I just got, I got this different, as a base, but I don't have a definition for the GCOMs, but I know when you get that, that you have rights.
2011, versus 2011, that's seventeen, and salary, that's 2010, patch eight, that's to, to stretch the budget to replace the full-time person, part-time person. Ten hours, ten hours, ten hours, we can, and all, right now, they don't have, they don't have, sorry, we don't have part-time person.
Can you motion approve 2011, that's seventeen, on the first one?
Second.
Discussion.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Erb?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
If everyone agrees to suspend the rules, I'm.
It's, 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 it's changed the back to, as part of the state.
So you're saying you move the second reading, next one, and suspend the rule.
I, I, I think. I would, I would like to, for the time I have, that's.
Are you saying you can, the second?
We can do the second, but then we stop there.
Second.
Dale?
Yes.
Erb?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ellen? Yes.
Make a motion to pass resolution 2013, on the second reading.
7011, so.
Ah, I'm sorry, yeah, 2011, seventeen.
Discussion.
Erb?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ellen? Yes.
The agenda is, your business 2012, project second reading.
I think we just have to pass it as such, because then when I, when you go to sign, I'll have that all through.
Think a motion to pass the budget, 2012, second reading.
Review the second.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Erb?
Yes.
Dale? Yes.
I've got a couple of things, first of all, a subcommittee of my commission has been working on revising the sign ordinance, this will be going in front of the league commission this month, for their consideration and review, so it's coming, and working to form, back to you. That's at least copy for you to be looking at, reviewing before it comes to you, but like I said, it'll be in front of the league commission later this month. This came as a request from Sean Green, who has come before the BZA for several reasons and other things, who thought our whole ordinance was a little tough to interpret and understand, so, this has also been afforded to him for his review and comment, don't know that will change much, but will at least be open to any comments that come back. If you could do reviewing that in the next month or so, we haven't changed anything with the fines, so, we would like to try to get this done with this council at the end of the year, it's our, and if you have any questions about anything, and then you can direct them to Kathy or I, we will, as far as the Lincoln Street project goes, we did our pre-final walkthrough with Endot. As far as the Lincoln Street project goes, we did our pre-final walkthrough with Endot last Thursday. There are a couple of minor cosmetic things that need to be cleaned up. They had put a crack sealer in some of the cracks in the sidewalk. And it must have frozen through the winter on the job site or something, because it's all just broken apart and all has to be removed or replaced. They've still got a little bit of side work. And we've rejected, along with Endot, the seat walls. Big sign, the sealer that's on it has just kind of been put on haphazardly. So Endot's making a massive wash of all of it again and resealing. So we're still waiting on the urns that go on the seat walls at the health department of the hospital. And the lights that were in the pavers in those pedestrian areas. They got the elevation wrong, and when they ended up putting the lenses on them, they're about three quarters of an inch too high. So they said they can at the right elevation, but when they ended up putting the lens on it, it became a trip hazard. So Endot said they had a five-day window to complete that punchless, but those cans are set concrete and all that. Anyway, we're just going to come back out to adjust those four lights. So I don't think that's going to get done in five days. And we're still waiting on two wayfinding signs that go on those pedestrian plaza areas. Which, if you're southbound on Lincoln Street, which are the courthouse and City Hall and things like that.
Is all the grass being planted, or is that weeds, or about the gas station next to Pictet King? What is that?
That's weeds. Nobody's taking care of it. They have gone through America with the wants and needed all of that, my hands. There's still some sign to go up by Taco Bell and a couple of other planning areas that'll get addressed around First November. So that's that project. Our Gas Creek project, which is two regional detention ponds and an additional five-foot pipe under the railroad. We took bids for that last week. And we had four alternatives. One was really expensive, armoring of the bank of the pipe once it comes under the railroad. And it's called Armor Flex. It's pieces that are tied together, they look like jacks that are tied together with a steel cable. So we'll probably just, that was really expensive, so we'll probably just go ahead and put riprap there. We'll take probably three of the four alternatives, but we can't award a contract until we get our permits in the end. And we're still waiting for final permits from I D M and D N R. Then last but not least is our Broadway project. There were thirteen red sunset maples that were supposed to go out in the islands there. Those trees get really broad, really big. We were looking for something that was a little smaller, more compact, more columnar, more straight up, could spread out. So Brian, I don't know if he's still here, he went around and pulled all of the businesses there with a couple of trees that the landscape architect had picked out. And some of them chose a flowering pear, but that has these white flowers in the spring that, as the wind blows first time in April, they're everywhere. We had concerns about clogging somewhere somewhere's another thing, so we didn't really buy anything that flowered. And so between Mark Kloster, Ken Pro, myself, a couple of the other merchants, Judy Rust, and the landscape architect, we've chosen a ginkgo tree. And we're going to get the milk, doesn't smell.
Hasn't said it just.
So, anyway, the red sunset maples are more common. They were originally specified to be four-inch diameter trees, caliper trees. And the ginkgos are a little harder to find, and they can only find a two-and-a-half-inch caliper right now. But they're about a little more than a hundred dollars more expensive per tree. So we're looking at a fifteen-hundred-dollar add to the construction contract to get the trees that will make most everybody happy. So I think the mayor was thinking about using added funds to pay for that, and we're really just looking for approvals. He's always asked for your approvals on how this matters.
Where are Freeland Road, aging Broadway?
They are to start.
They have to start by this Friday?
Yeah, they have to start by this Friday.
Retaping.
Well, there's some full-depth patching where you need to cut everything out and go back down to the stone base. And that needs to take place. I think there's somewhere between twenty and twenty-five spots.
Do you want to recompact that?
Yes. It'll be done with the jumping jack compactor, but it will, it will be not the roller, it will be small response. Then we'll come and mill the whole thing, resurface from Montgomery on land to bypass, and then restryft. And that was the first one on there. We made sure that was the first one on their list, because that's a big pay-through tip, and they requested that that area be addressed first.
About how long will that project take, if you have any idea?
Two and a half weeks, maybe.
Is it going to be striped, is it too late?
A portion of it will be at least some along the wall there.
Send that to.
I was going to voice a concern when White, White found out, we were driving north on Broadway in the new section. When you drive north and you come up towards, looking at the old Moore's building. Boy, you're right, you're not even in the intersection, you're way off the intersection, right at the corner of the building, looking straight into it when you're at that. The two things she observed was, when you, when you come up to that stop sign, you're so far off of the lane that goes straight, where you're going to go straight at. That someone must turn, it really makes it uncomfortable for you, if the person turns and then you going straight. And then the other thing she observed was that drain, that it's hitting that drain every time, right there, because you're making the turn to the left. And you're going right straight into the drain, which is lower.
No, that's, that was raised. It used to be lower, you know, that big noise and slab there. Now, he's talking about one in Washington, in Broadway. Not the one that's in the curb line now, down at Maiden, in Broadway.
Yeah, I know it's raised, but there's still a dip.
There, there still is a dip, and we needed to catch some water there, but.
I just thought I'd bring it to you, because I, I didn't notice it as much as she did, she was driving there.
We talked about it at the design meetings with the whole group, that there was going to be a little bit of an offset there. But everybody thought that that was okay with the design committee.
Any word from Endot as to when the signage is going to be changed, or Broadway and Maiden, that directional?
That's going to be part of the striping that we have done in Mark's maintenance program here at, before, at the end of November.
Before the end of November, okay.
Well, Endot's not doing it, we changed it, Endot said we need to change it back.
They were waiting on Endot, but we're not doing that now.
No, we're, the striping, the strippers that will stripe Freeland Road will change that. So they thought it should be changed back to the way it was. We've had some concerns, I've written a few people letters, saying just give us time. We have a, usually toward the end of the year, when contractors are done their big painting projects, they do these melon overlay projects. And they, they have not till usually Thanksgiving before the plants close down, because you really, you're not supposed to paint if it's under thirty-four degrees.
And the orange under construction signs, Mary and Fifth Street.
We can't take those down until Endot files the project. So they, we would, even though it seems like the project's done and nothing's going on, until a hundred percent of the project's done, and that, even the final plantings, and if Endot files the project, we cannot take those down, unfortunately.
Are we on the property where Manus' building is, right?
Yes.
Someone taking care of that from the city?
Yes. The street department has been knowing that right now. And we had some discussion with staff members, we wanted to continue to have on.
They might be very true, we lost it, it's not, it's not that. Therefore, maybe five or six, three groups, such as tourists, take it, place their sunny job, they advertise. Like, can I do, they take the city clubs, or goes on the Green Times, and the other things going on happening in the city near the future.
We were looking at that, or at the city property down in Lincoln, where people are putting a lot of signs now. And trying to clean that up and put a big community sign that would have interchangeable letters where community events could be advertised.
Is that Brad's responsibility to, to Endot? Are they planning on doing anything with that?
What you see is what you get.
I saw, they're doing something, but it doesn't look pretty.
It does not look pretty. The homeowners, Stone Mason, did a better job on that side of the wall than Endot did on their part, the wall, but it does not look pretty.
Is that Stump there responsibility too, or is that ours?
I think Mark said he tried to get them to take that out, but that was, so it may be ours, I don't know.
That'd be nice to take that out, so that looks special.
It's, it's huge, and I don't know that she can get it out without impacting the wing wall of the bridge.
Or just someone cutting it down and.
Get some grinder on it or something. It's about five foot across, it's a big sign.
What are they doing across from the gas station over there that, they're tearing out the ground, all that pavement? And she was just, no.
Shell station, they're removing underground tanks.
No, no, right across from the trucking place. That back goes in there?
Oh, they might be removing the old slab from the building that was torn down. That's, when I drove by after lunch this morning, it looked like they might have tried to pull out that slab so they could pave it now, a little parking area there. That's what it looked to me like. But it looks good without, without the down. Thank you. Trust me. You're welcome.
We have a letter, a paper, email from Eric Bennington, he found this regarding the scholarships, election, and supporting this. It does have to let the given heart personally, we will, we will, until December thirtieth. So sooner the better, but we could, we could have this action.
I would say you contact Chairman Kim Leggers, know why she's not hearing, and if we'll be hearing something.
Right now, one person we have that sounds like, that we know will be his next, and we'll be there around, and it does require junior business meetings as well.
And that's why it's kind of jokes and resistance, all the reason.
If he was vocal, he's sad, but he's a job thirty-one. So I'll contact him tomorrow, and tell him we'll be in Winston, and start after that. One other item on the agenda, we have an agenda that is, the mayor's issue. A situation where talks of the responsibility, not to deal with our street commissioner, which he has the knowledge to do inspection on roads. And I had discussed it with the TIF board, they agreed, paid for his time, when he was busy doing black copies. And this is about city, reversed by the state board council, and we can't believe we do that. His salary, Chris, he knows it's two o'clock in the morning, you know, and a few hours, forty-four dollars. They said, we can't do that now, so he has to pay that back, or someone has to pay it back. And the, the old Helen Barnes, who is now a committee, sit down and discuss the, and determine that they also can pay that back. Which I guess we'll go to the TIF, or the city, so far between borders. So that's what we're at, we're doing ways to do it, but I don't think it's consideration. Right now, at this point, the person who did the task has to be paid money, he was given.
Before he knew that, he was, those under the understanding, he was going to get paid to do. You know, I guess in my opinion, you test somebody, you're going to pay them to do the job, and then it becomes like, well, because of this technicality, whatever, you can like. I don't think it's right, I think we need to do something to getting the money we promised him he'd get. You know, it's like letting somebody do a job and say, so I'm going to pay.
I know, it's, it's a bad situation. It's nothing, maybe the other sort of push.
What are the other options?
Two, if you want to weigh in on this, you can discuss this with the board of council.
Yeah, I mean, just a synopsis, this is what happened. The, I think Kent here, Kent can speak to as well, the, as part of the, as part of the construction project, there was a need for inspectors. And it seemed to be beneficial to the city, and it even costing, particularly to hire Mark Kloster, who was inspector. That was done, but what the state board of council said is that duties that he performed as part of that project were very similar to the duties that he performs as, as his department position. And because he is exempt employee, the state board of council says, you can't, it's, it's almost treated as overtime, as opposed to a separate project as a, as a private inspector. So what they're saying is, you know, he needs to pay that money back. A solution to the issue, and this, this happens, as I understand it, with the state board of council, with other communities, it's happened, some regularities. If someone is overpaid or underpaid, what you do is you have to address the issue moving forward. You can't, you can't necessarily, you can't pay them money for services to be rendered in retrospectives. And so you can make a salary adjustment, a one-time salary adjustment for the exact same money, if that's what you're doing, but, but it has to be moved forward. You can't, and it would be prorated over the period of the year. I mean, it's not something that, you can't have them pay it back for O eleven and hand it to O twelve. If that makes any sense, I don't know if I'm making any sense.
Are we talking about laws? It's under five, maybe four, thirty-four. About five, about five hundred.
The problem that we have with it was, it was in direct violation of our personnel policy, and he's an exempt employee. And you can't pay, according to the state board of council, you couldn't pay an exempt employee anymore than what their exempt wages are. So we didn't feel the need to change our personnel policy for one time, which could cause ripple effect for other exempt employees. So we wanted to keep it where it was at, and we wanted to reverse the negative that was done, to get it back. Nobody, nobody doubts that Martin can do that job well, he probably deserves that money, and I think I said that to me. He probably deserves it more than anything. But the whole point of it was, was that decision was made, we. But the whole point of it was, was that decision was made, we couldn't, until the previous personnel policy meeting. By then, was he already paid some money?
He, one time, was he paid. We could, but if they're saving more money, but because of what happened the first time we stopped it, they're doing it.
So the only thing we could think of as a personnel committee was to reversal of that.
Now, my only concern is, how do you rectify someone who got a bad bid of a lot of, they go to work to do a service for the Lincoln Street project? How do you compensate them for that? Say sorry? I understand it has to be repaid by law.
And I think the thing that concerns me is, you know, we have to stay all the time coming in. And he says, you can't do this. And I know the mayor, when it was presented to TIF, what I was one of the, wants to vote, we hadn't looked for it because it did make sense, uh, not really thinking of the repercussions, you know, of the, the other coming in. I, I guess the thing that concerns me is if we try to find a way to justify it, uh, it would look like we're creating a loophole to.
But you, I understand, but State Board Council, that's not a problem. Right, Tim?
Well, I mean.
Basically, that's what the auditor pulled, uh, while she got this paid.
The council, I mean, council's well within itself to do a s, uh, salary adjustment and say it's one time and have it equal the same amount, but you know, it has the ability to do that. The issue, I think, Daryl, I think I have more of a clear on it is, the issue is, the State Board of Council will get this same. We think this is, you know, very similar job, and, but if it was, if it was dissimilar, then, uh, the State Board of Council would know it's two, which is not treated as overtime. So what you've got is you've got this, this gray area, if you will, or the State Board of Council has the ability, has the auditor to come in and say, this is our P, it's, it's, it's too similar, so this is the, the ruling, if you will, and you had.